She's doing okay. Her back surgery is okay.
Okay. Hey, I have this side in the back of my truck. I'll be up Thursday about 11:00.
Super.
I'd like to call the city council meeting and order and ask you to join us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Ready? Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have been informed that Tammy Norman with the San Dimas rodeo would like to make a presentation to sponsors and to the council. If that's true, this is the time.
Should we join you?
You need to go up to the mic and tell what you're doing.
Thank you for giving us this time. What we'd like to do is present two checks to two groups that we support within the community. The first group is the Gladstone Junior ROTC. They help with our parking and wherever we need help during the weekend of our rodeo. The other organization is the House of Ruth, which is a charity that is very near and dear to my heart, and they give back so much to the community as well. And then, we did have a certificate for the city council thanking them for everything. We'll have to bring it to the next council meeting. It got left behind, I'm sorry. But, you guys, without the support...
I owe Emmett Bedare a check, and I tell him all the time, "I forgot that check."
It's in the mail, right?
No, no, I'm gonna hand deliver it.
But, without the support of our city and our council, our rodeo would have a very hard time getting put on, so thank you all very much for everything that you do to contribute the city, the council, and all of your support. We really, truly appreciate it. So, the first check we would like to give would be to the House of Ruth. Our next check is gonna go to the Gladstone Junior ROTC. We learned several years ago that our donations are their biggest fundraiser, so we look forward to having them every year and contributing to their organization.
I know, you should have a white hat on.
He should, he should.
Thank you again for allowing us to do this here.
The next item on the agenda is oral communications. This is an opportunity for the members of the audience to address the city council. We ask that you give us your name and address, but that is not a requirement, not your address, but where you live. But it's not a requirement if you choose to speak without telling us who you are, that's permitted. We do have a three-minute time limit for this session. We have a five-minute time limit at the end of the meeting, so if anybody would like to speak now, please come forward and tell us what you'd like to tell us. Anyone? Okay, we'll move on then to the consent calendar. All the items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion unless a member of the council asks for an item to be removed for separate discussion.
Move approval.
We have a motion in second to approve the consent calendar. Anybody opposed? Hearing no opposition, that carries by unanimous five-zero vote, and that brings us to other business. And the first item of other business is an agreement with Advocates for Healthy Living for the Farmer's Market. Ken?
Yeah, I'd like to call on Hector Kissaman, our Parks and Recreation Director, for the staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Before tonight, we have a staff report to present to you, which has to do with the 2020 Advocates for Healthy Living Farmer's Market permit. Since 2007, the Advocates for Healthy Living, led by Mr. Maurice Quayar, have operated the Farmer's Market for San Dimas. The program has included a variety of vendors, including but not limited to certified agricultural producers, prepared food producers, commercial food vendors, arts and craft vendors, nonprofit organizations, health and beauty vendors, youth-oriented vendors, and performing arts, as well as sponsored booths. Prior to each season, Mr. Quayar presents a request for proposal with a letter of intent to the Parks and Recreation Department, asking for the city to allow them to go ahead and hold this Farmer's Market, which is held in the parking lot of City Hall in the Civic Center here, as well as along First Street. Parks and Recreation staff did meet with Advocates for Healthy Living representatives to discuss their 2020 proposal, along with their special events permit and agreement, to ensure that all required documentation was in accordance to the permit and agreement. The event for this season is the same as in following, in the previous years, which is on Wednesday evenings, beginning this year on April 1st, going through September 2nd of 2020. The hours of operation will be, it will open on First Street at 4:00 PM and City Hall Parking Lot at 5:00 PM, and then closing at 8:30 on school nights, and then nine on non-school nights. These locations that are impacted include First Street adjacent to Civic Center Park, the east side of the City Hall Parking Lot, the southern portion of Civic Center Park, Civic Center Plaza, and also note for your information, street closures required are at First Street at Iglesia to the end of First Street, as well as the City Hall Parking Lot. Those are closed from 4:00 to 10:00 PM. So, as noted previously, the proposal is logistically consistent with past events and in accordance with permit and agreement requirements. There is a special condition, number 11, in the special event conditions of approval, which allows for all categories of vendors requested by AHL be included in the event with an emphasis placed on farmers. Worth noting is that last year, the Farmer's Market began working with Market Watch, Market Match, I'm sorry, which is a nutrition incentive program offered at 130 Farmer's Markets across the state. Market Match doubles customers' buying power when they spend their CalFresh EBT, formerly known as food stamps, WIC, and social security benefits at these participating markets. This has helped many Californians be able to purchase more products at Farmer's Markets, which in many cases has to do with produce, which they are unable to get that fresh produce at other places. It has proven to be beneficial to many, and also proven to raise the participant level at the Farmer's Market. It also is an incentive for the farmers to make it to the market because there are more people at the event. So, the conditions of approval also require the following documents, which include a site plan, the certificate of insurance, their operating permit, a security plan which is approved by the Sheriff's Department, and proof of California nonprofit status. The weekly responsibilities for Advocates for Healthy Living are to conduct complete traffic control, set up and tear down, compliance with NPDS discharge standards, appropriate route signage, and they are required to clean up of the event and dispose of all the waste that they pick up and is collected at the Civic Center Parking Lot trash dumpsters. We also require, and it is their responsibility, that they communicate with city staff and cooperate with city staff. Staff may assist AHL with oversight of the traffic control, but it is expected of them to provide volunteers as required to make sure that the closures are done properly. And what is also required from Parks and Rec staff is to assist AHL or Advocates for Healthy Living with the use of the restroom facilities, which are located in the senior center, Community Center Building. Staff is recommending that the city council approve Advocates for Healthy Living operate the 2020 Farmer's Market event in the public right of way, including approval of street closure on First Street, east from Iglesia Street, and to the east side of the parking of the City Hall Municipal Parking Lot on Wednesday evenings, beginning April 1st, 2020 through September 2nd, 2020, as well as authorize the city manager or appointee the ability to approve future special event permits submitted by Advocates for Healthy Living, with the condition that any substantive change to the permit shall require city council review. That concludes my report. Mr. Maurice is here to answer any questions, if you have any. Otherwise, that concludes my report.
Maurice, did you have anything to add?
Good evening. First, I mean, I wouldn't be here unless Kurt didn't push me here, but back in June of 2006, I was here at a city council meeting on a Tuesday night, and Kurt had mentioned that, "Why don't you do it?" Because I was complaining that the Farmer's Market was closing, and that night I actually emailed Blaine, and that started the whole thing going with Teresa and putting me in contact with Joe and Music in the Park, and here we are 13 years later, and it's pretty exciting, so. And another thing, I want to thank you for your service. I mean, you're moving on, we got Emmett that's gonna take the helm, thank you, Emmett. And we have, I think Eric is here, that's gonna be great to have a new face on the council, and John, of course, got re-elected. But if you guys have any questions, I'm here to answer them. It's basically the same setup as we've been doing for many years.
Did you ever think 13 years ago that you would still be doing it?
I did not, I did not. I thought it would be handed off to somebody else, but...
Maurice, I do have a question.
Yes.
Do you have an onsite manager here?
Yes.
I keep hearing about somebody, but I don't know who it is.
Yeah, so I have Alicia Cole, which is our market manager that's onsite, and also another assistant, her name's Ivory, and she's also there. They're always here during the event for any questions.
All right, and this question's for Hector. Hector, have we assessed the fact that, especially during Music in the Park, is the restroom facilities, you know, substantial enough that, I mean, I've had people talk to me and mention the fact that restroom facilities in the senior buildings, not enough for the crowd? Have we looked at that at all?
As a matter of fact, yes. We have, and there, internally, we've had some discussion about utilizing some funding that is allocated to the city on an annual basis, which is, comes as a mechanism known as Prop A, and which allocates approximately $115,000 a year to the city, and you can roll that over on an annual basis. This was the first year, which it started, so in a couple of years, we will have enough funding to build one of those, you know, sort of those restrooms that comes prefabricated and put on that site. Those are just some thoughts that we have, because the existing facility, as you mentioned, the Senior Center, is not ideal for having both the market and the concerts in the park, and even if those events were separate, we have other events throughout the year which also impact that facility, and so I believe that the park requires its own restroom, and we're thinking of a way of how we can fund that in the future.
Is there any practical reason why we couldn't use the restrooms in the plumber building until we make that decision?
So, there typically are other events going on in that facility. I've not, you know, done enough research to know if every time we have that event on a Wednesday, that building isn't used for another purpose, but yeah, it can be done, logistically, I'm sure it would work, but it, you know, just requires some moving around, shifting of staff, to be able to accommodate both facilities.
I'd appreciate if you just take a look at it, and Ken, if you don't mind?
Sure.
Just some type of report.
And Hector, on that same note, I'd also be interested in some of the portable restroom solutions as well. We have enough events, I think, as you go to look at this other temporary option, that with CERT and some other things going on in the community, that in the Easter egg event in Villa Verde Park, that perhaps there's some very elaborate portable solutions with wash stations that may be better suited and quicker or easier to get, so.
Will do.
And this Prop A, is that, you said it's new money, that's not what we use for transportation?
No, it's different. It's for park, it was a measure, actually, Measure A, and they just started the allocation of those funds this year, so it's about $116,000 on an annual basis for the next five years.
Those restrooms are about $2.5 or something like that, if I remember, $250,000?
Depending on how elaborate you want it to be, but you could probably get a very nice one for about a, you know, quarter of a million dollars.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, and good luck on another...
Thank you, good luck on the future.
Oh, wait, one option.
Go ahead.
It says that we need 20% produce, okay? Are we getting 20% produce? Because I hear numerous people tell me it's not a Farmer's Market anymore because we have one or two produce people, and I don't know that it's 20%. I'll have to leave that to staff to assess, but I've had, you know, I came here, you know, maybe two or three times, or maybe four, and it's hard for me to assess how much 20% is, but I know that one or two produce people isn't 20%. I think we need to start looking...
So, the goal is to try to get, obviously, to 20%, obviously, we're not there yet, and part of the 20% that we're talking about is certified producers, which is different than farmers. So, a certified producer would be a honey vendor, would be people that are succulents or plants, or different things that, micro grains, so all those are considered certified producers. They might not be selling oranges and apples and that kind of stuff, but it is part of that account that we're trying to get to.
Okay, that explains a little to me, thank you.
We have, the matter to be considered is whether we're to approve...
I would move approval, second.
We have a motion in second to approve the request and contract. Anybody want to discuss it further?
Just to clarify, your motion is to approve items one and item two, right? Because item two, I think, is in perpetuity, is that correct, Ken? Yeah, okay, I'm good.
Okay, that, anybody opposed? Without objection, that carries by unanimous five-zero vote, and that brings us to a Gold Line update.
Yeah, just one item, as we've reported in the past, the Gold Line Authority has been holding a series of open houses in the four communities of the extension. They started last week, last Thursday, in Glendora, and there's an open house this Thursday in San Dimas. It'll be Thursday, March 12th, from 5:30 to 7:30 in the Community Building. The format of the open houses, it's not a presentation, it's actually a series of workstations that'll be around the Community Building where people can stop by. There'll be staff members from the Gold Line Authority who will be able to answer questions and be able to explain some of the displays. So, if anyone's interested in attending, you don't have to be there at 5:30, like it's not a sit-down presentation, you can just stop by any time during that two-hour period and view some of the information, which will provide you updates as far as the current status of the construction project and timelines going into the future. So, if people want more information, they can either go on the city's website or on the Gold Line Authority website, and that's all I have to report this meeting.
Okay, anybody have any questions over the report? If not, we'll move on to oral communications. First, will be members of the audience, and the rules are the same as last time, except it's a five-minute limit. So, anybody want to address the city council?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Patrick Jones, 239 Avenue, Melissenda. I missed you on the ballot, so you're now gonna retire, and we are gonna miss you, so you're gonna have to come see us every once in a while. My point of talking tonight is, I really think that the city needs to look at the election process that we do for our elections, you know, from the signage to the, you know, we had, I'm glad the election is over, and I know you are all happy that it's over, and maybe what I'm gonna say isn't something that you guys necessarily want to publicly say, so I'll say it, but I think we need to put together some type of committee or whatever to evaluate what is given to somebody who wants to run for office, as far as what's expected in the election process, what's, what they need to do, from the forms that they need to fill out, and I know that Deborah already probably does that, but it, we have people putting signs up that shouldn't be where they are, they don't have landowners' permission, they're just putting them up. People are taking signs, they're stealing signs, they're doing all that, which probably won't change, but I think that there should be a little better understanding of what they're signing up for when they run for the office. It's not just, "I'm just gonna do it, and if I don't make it, you know, it's no big deal," because it does affect the city, and I just, I don't know, I don't know what the process is, but it would be nice if somebody would look at that and make it a little bit better, so, anyway, hope you enjoy your retirement.
Maybe the same person was putting signs in the wrong places was also taking the other signs. Sometimes happens.
It could be, it could be a lot of things, it could be people with, you know, good intentions, whatever it is, I never know, but there were just some things that were said during the election that was more than just the rhetoric, and people are able to say things, but I don't think there were people running that understood actually what the job was, and that's disrespectful to us who have to vote for them, or not vote for them, and, I don't know, I don't, I don't, we don't teach civics anymore, so it's quite apparent in today's, anyway, good night.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the city?
Jim McCants, Ocean Bluff Avenue. Along the same lines, I think we have a serious lack of information regarding judges on our ballots. My wife and I went out of our way to try and get just a miniscule amount of information concerning any one of them. You're almost to the point where you don't vote for anyone at all because of the lack of knowledge. I don't personally know what's involved, it was difficult to get any information regarding judges.
I agree, and I think if you look at the vote tally, a whole lot of people don't vote for the judges, just because of that reason. Anyone else like to address the city council? Okay, well, that brings us to the city manager.
Yeah, I've got a couple of topics I want to briefly discuss tonight. First one is, everyone is very well aware of the issues surrounding the coronavirus, and I just wanted to touch on a couple of things that the city is doing in that regard. One is that we view one of our roles is to try and put out as much factual information to the community as possible. We're in constant contact with the county health department, we have regular phone conversations with them and get information, and we're trying to disseminate that information out to the public. So, we sent out some information this morning on our e-blast, and so we'll be sending out additional information as it becomes available. One of the most important things that the county and all of the health agencies try and emphasize is personal hygiene and personal protection, so we can't emphasize enough, people, you know, taking personal care of themselves, washing their hands, keeping social distance, and the act of handshaking and hugging people in public should be minimized. So, those are just some personal issues. But as the city as an employer, we also have employees that we're trying to make sure that we protect and make sure, we're trying to accommodate their needs, so we're constantly communicating with them. We had an all-employees meeting this morning about the fact that if they have any symptoms of potentially being sick with the regular flu or the Corona flu, to stay home and, you know, not try and spread that to other people. We also are emphasizing the fact that it seems like daily there are more institutions that are closing, whether it be universities, or in some cases, schools or daycares, that we realize that that may have an impact on some of our employees, and we're encouraging them, if they need to stay home for childcare reasons, that they need to do that, and that's okay, and we'll try and work around that. If it comes to the point where this becomes more widespread, we'll work, we'll look at policies for those employees that may be able to work from home to do that, so we're exploring that as well. And also that we are looking at our programs, you know, as you see, again, daily, almost every couple hours, some of this information changes, but there are more venues that are closing, events, whether it's concerts or sporting events, or other types of programs. We'll be continuing to monitor our programs, primarily our recreation programs, whether they be classes, excursions, or some of our facilities, whether it's the Senior Center or the REC Center, to find out if their people are staying away from these programs or facilities because of either fear, or the fact that they just want to, you know, keep their social distance, and we'll make modifications or adjustments to those programs as necessary. Again, this is a very, very fluid situation. We had information this morning, we got new information this afternoon, so we're continuing to monitor that, but we just want the public to know that we're keeping a very close eye on that, and we'll make adjustments to our operations as we see fit. The second is, there were a couple of references to the election that we had last week, and we wanted to let the public know that, you know, the election center concept was put on by the county. We consolidated our election with the county, so it was their decision to go to the new voting system. We realized that the impact on the electorate in San Dimas was significant. The lines here at our one-vote center in the Community Building were extremely long, and there were, unfortunately, it appeared some voters that seemed disenfranchised and decided that they didn't want to stand in line. We are communicating our concerns to the county... We are communicating our concerns to the county. There's a process with the registrar recorder's office for us to provide feedback, and we're doing that. And hopefully, we'll continue to monitor that with the county, and they'll make necessary adjustments for the November election. As far as the election results, because of the delays in the, in the voting centers, the vote count process by the county has been delayed more than it has been in the past. So they're still counting ballots and posting updated information. So we don't know at this point when the county will certify the results of the election. They have up to 30 days after the election to do that. So we won't know for sure when those results will be official back to the city, and therefore we won't know for sure exactly when the, the new council will be sworn in. So as we get more information and updated information, again, we'll put that out on our website. So, again, we, on, you know, we, we sympathize with the electorate for what they had to go through on, on Tuesday of last week. And we are very concerned, and we will be making sure that the county is well aware of that, our concerns. And lastly, even though there is the Gold Line open house on Thursday, we will be having an Ask the Mayor show. Most likely, the last Ask the Mayor show.
Morris, most likely.
With Mayor Morris. So that'll be seven o'clock on Thursday night. So if you'd like to tune in and participate in that, we'd encourage that. So that's all I have for tonight.
Sidney, you're dirty.
No items tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Members of the council, did, any council members attend meetings at the expense of the city since the last report? Seeing nobody do that, we'll go with our individual members and comments and updates. Start with Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, I'm sitting somewhere different tonight. I will say this, out of respect for Mayor Morris in his tenure, and after many discussions with the mayor-elect, I think it's more important tonight and in the near future for this body to be together, as we transition into the new council. So, so that's that. I remain committed and resolved to the issue that prompted all of it, but that's on the back burner at this point, and thank you, Mayor. So, that being said, the election, congratulations tentatively to John and to, I guess, potentially Councilman-elect Eric Weber. There are ballots still being calculated. But that being said, I wanted to acknowledge Mr. Bobby Mathis, who I think is here tonight, as well as, I know Emma Ramirez was here, David Estrada, Nicole Gonzalez, and Gil Gonzalez, who also pulled votes, I might add. It takes, as, as each candidate learned through this process, it takes some bravery and some intestinal fortitude to put yourself on that ballot, to withstand public scrutiny, you know, and it's, it's an eye-opening experience to what you think democracy is, and, and then the ugly truth perhaps, you know, we experience. But nevertheless, it does take, it does take courage to do that. So thank you all for running. It was an interesting election cycle. I do agree with the comments from Mr. Jones earlier. I do think that the council needs to have a discussion as it relates to issues pertaining to filing, signage, and signage to address the entirety of the signage issue and paperwork. As it relates to the voting centers, I did get a lot of phone calls regarding the voting centers, or our voting center specifically. It was, it was very interesting. We dropped our ballots off, I think, on Friday, and we're able to walk right in, drop it off, and walk right out. But it seems that despite the efforts of the county to get the word out, people just weren't aware, for whatever reason. And so I did stop by City Hall, and the line was, in fact, all the way out to the back. It was, I was getting text and blown up. So, point is, two things. One, I, when we, when we let the county know our feedback, it would be helpful, perhaps, to have billboards here that show the wait times at the surrounding centers. As it turns out, a number of our residents went to Fairplex after getting very frustrated with being here, only to have just walked in at Fairplex because there was no line. And apparently, there were some technical difficulties in Laverne, which led to bleed over here. So, bottom line is, if there was a way, even if it was online only, for them to show the wait times, I think many people would be appreciative, especially those coming out of work. I think the last voter at our vote center was something around 10:50 PM or something like that, by the time we were closed, and waiting in line a very long time. So I know Deborah and I had a discussion regarding identifying potential alternate sites that maybe could be used when we get to the general election. And I think it's important for the people, the citizens here and neighboring communities to know that this is gonna happen again in November. So hopefully, we can get the kinks worked out here in the next few months and have a better voting experience, or you might sign up to be permanent vote-by-mail and just go that route and avoid all this headache altogether. The coronavirus piece, I appreciate Ken giving that update. I think it's important, you know, especially, I, I was in the gym last night, and I found myself wondering, oh, is this sanitary in here? You know, just, you have those moments where it doesn't make sense. And then the, I know there's member of this, members of this community that went and ran the LA Marathon. And, you know, it's going to those events, especially where it's a respiratory illness, through community spread, just makes you scratch your head a little bit. But nevertheless, we shouldn't live in panic, we should be smart. So stay clean, and it's funny, the tips, wash your hands. I think my mom always told me that, cover your mouth when you cough, you know, and so be it. But anyways, nevertheless, congratulations to everyone. I think Measure SD, as many of you saw, was defeated. Stay tuned, I guess, is the discussion, as we get into budgetary discussions. And we try to work towards where we need to be in the next five years or so, and that's gonna be a challenge, I think, the next council will face, and we'll have to make some smart decisions, that coupled with housing. So there's a lot of work before the city ahead, but thankfully, we've had some good leadership preceding me that has set us up, and I think we'll, we'll do it. So, thank you, have a good night.
John?
So just a brief comment now about, about the election. I'll make a, a longer statement when we get to the swearing-in on, on the 14th of April, I think is when we're gonna do it. So, but, but thank you to all the people who voted in San Dimas, the people who helped put it on, and all the candidates, who, as Ryan said, you know, dared to put their hat in the ring and, you know, went through the process, and, and it is an eye-opener, and it's something of an experience, I'll tell you. But, so thank you to everybody who did that. I will say with the vote centers, it, it was really unacceptable. You know, the county and the state, and I heard these comments throughout the, the lead-up, encouraging people to either vote by mail or vote in these 11 days prior to the, the 11 days of voting. And that is all well and good for somebody else to be telling the voters, this is what you should be doing, and, and why aren't you doing this? But it's, it's really not acceptable to expect that, and then to be, be just set up for failure as it was. When I voted on election day, because I like doing that, I waited, you know, an hour and 15 minutes, because I was there in the middle of the day. It wasn't as bad as somebody I know who was there for two and a half hours, got there right before eight o'clock. But, and people who didn't vote, I've got, like you, got a number of people who said, I just couldn't vote, or, or I expected to pop in and pop out, but they had to be someplace else, and they just didn't have a chance to vote on that, you know, near the end of the day. So it's good to give everybody good advice, but I really think we should have somebody from the county or whoever's in charge come here and answer some questions and explain how they're gonna improve that. It doesn't have to be next week, or, you know, next meeting, but in the near future, because it's, it's, it's good for us to be talking through staff to their staff, but I, I know they know, but they should hear from, the, the people of San Dimas should see their representatives putting the pressure directly on the people who are, who are responsible for this. So that, only so that things change. I mean, San Dimas only having one, I guess technically we had two, because Sutherland School is technically in San Dimas, over there on, on Amelia, but, but anyhow, so. So I would like to see somebody here that we could talk to about that and give some explanation and plans for the future. Thank you, Ken, for all the, the update on the coronavirus and all the steps we're taking. I would add, like, one additional suggestion. I, I would like to see hand sanitizer stations or bottles on a table or something like that at the entrance to all public meetings at this point. So we've got the Gold Line coming up in two days. I don't know if we can find somebody, somebody on staff who's hiding a bottle of sanitizer in their desk and, and ask them to, to, "Sherry, you got one?" I think she's admitting it. So, and, you know, donate it for the, for the cause. But yeah, we should have one out, right out here outside, for all the means, for the duration. Oh, we said one out there, okay. Good, because I suggested that to Ken this morning. I'm glad that, that happened. Fantastic, I love it. Okay, lastly, oh, about housing. So we did get something from Contract Cities today about SB 902, Scott Weiner's latest attack on city control of their own, own zoning. But here's what I want to say about this. According to the author of the bill, it's still, I, I think he's trying to make it palatable by allowing cities to retain local control over height requirements, objective standards, and other property constraints. So there's sort of two approaches or two responses we can take when we see these bills. One is to complain, advocate, wring our hands, you know, call Anthony Portantino, call the state, whatever, and tell them they shouldn't be doing this to us. And, and we should be doing that, that's fine. But the other is to look at those bills, analyze them, and see what we can do to retain as much control as possible. In this specific case, they're talking about property or sta, building standards and property standards. So whether it's lot coverage, height restrictions, setbacks, parking criteria, even design criteria, and the one tool that we have not adopted yet, which is the tool that is probably the most effective in this case, is the floor area ratio. So I am really looking forward to pushing that through in the coming few months, or this next term at least, to get the floor area ratio as one of the things that we can use. So the, so if it's true that the bill has, we still have control over things like floor area ratio, we do that, and we can thus protect and preserve as much as possible the single-family neighborhoods that we like. So instead of saying, we're just gonna let the state take control and do everything, because they always do that, if there's a chink in the armor, so to speak, or an Achilles' hill, or something like that on the, in the bill, and I think that's in this bill, actually, let's take advantage of it and retain as much local control as possible.
Thank you, John. Emmett?
I'd like to thank everybody who voted. We'll see how that all ends up in a couple of weeks. But I will tell you right now, if I happen to, to stay up here, John and Ryan are always gonna be on my right. They will always be able to say everything that needs to be said, and the people on the left can just say, ditto. This is ditto, yeah, for, for sure. I, I too dropped by City Hall Tuesday night, but I also came by during the week. And I, I had, I had more comments telling me what a good program this was, starting on that Saturday, because people came in, people who read, paid attention, came during that 11-day period, they could walk right in, had no problem, and you were telling me how, how, how cool this was, you could just do this and this. Obviously, on Tuesday, it was a nightmare, and our staff did a great job. I understand they had to go out and help, it looked like Disneyland here, they had lines going every which way, and that, Ryan was right. I was here at 10:55, and the last person went in to vote at 10:55 that night. And if you remember, the polls are supposed to close at eight o'clock. So it just didn't, didn't work, and I'm sure the staff's gonna take care of that. That's all I'm gonna really say, because they said it all, and thank you very much.
Well, to talk about the election, I just want to thank all the people that ran. I thought it was a very good election on the part of the people running in San Dimas. It was a very open and fair and honest election, so congratulations to everyone. Emmett is our new mayor, and congratulations, and John won reelection, and Eric Weber's out in the audience out there, and he won, he'll fill the new seat, and I think it'll be a good city council. And the ones that didn't win, well, you can run again next time, and maybe you've learned something. And I think San Dimas is in good shape. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to say it was a, it was a very good election, because I was not running. But I'd also like to congratulate Emmett and, and Eric and John for, for winning. I think, you know, you may, in a few months, you may think, what did I get myself in for this time? Because there are serious problems on the way, which I won't dwell on much, except number one is gonna be financial. And maybe not the first year, but the year or two after that, when the, you know, when you think about a change in the CalPERS estimate of, of rate of return of a half a percent increases our deficit by $3 million. And experts in the world say CalPERS estimate of the return is 2% too high. So that, we, we have an operating reserve. We do not have a true reserve, because our CalPERS debt would wipe it out, or wipe out a substantial part of it. So, and then the housing issue, finding a place to put 1,200 houses. And I, I think the way the state's gonna be looking at this, they're not gonna wait until the 10th year and say, you didn't do too well. They're gonna be calling on Henry and saying, where are you, Henry? Where are, where are those houses? So I think there will be challenges, as there always have been, and I know there will be in the future, and I think the people that you have elected are gonna be very well-qualified and able to deal with those challenges. But they are there. The second thing I'd like to say is, I like to thank Deborah and Ken and all of the people in the city who arranged for a small reception for me on, on last Saturday. It's amazing to sit there, and it's good, really, to see, to hear people tell all those lies about you when they're all good. It's amazing how people exaggerate. When you're on your way out, they exaggerate what a great person you are. But some of them would never say that otherwise. In fact, I was, didn't want to give my wife an opportunity to have a rebuttal. I, that, believe I don't believe that. My wife is, I mean, she is a wonderful person, and I am so happy to have her. As I think I said, she's my everything, and, and, but she does have the ability to, to make sure that I keep my feet on the ground, and that I remember that this is not a real big job. This is not, being the mayor of San Dimas, well, it's, I, I've really enjoyed it, and it's been very important in my life, because it's my, I grew up here, and, and I like the things that we've done since I've been involved with the government. But the fact is, it's not the most important thing in most people's lives in the city. You know, it's amazing how many people have no clue what the city government is doing, as long as it doesn't bother them. So, but all of that has been, I just want to thank you, Deborah and Ken, and for all the people who, who attended, and it was very nice, I appreciated it. I, I did fail to tell Deborah, and I don't know what I'm gonna say to the gentleman when I see him again, because the Los Angeles County Fire Chief, I saw him about a week and a half ago, and he said, if they're having any event for you, I wanna be sure to know, 'cause I'm coming. And I didn't tell Deborah that to put him on the list. So I don't, I probably won't see him again real, he's very tall, so it's easy to dodge in a, in a, in a, in a crowd. So, but it was, it was a, it was very, very nice of the people who came and the people who spoke, and I appreciated it. And I really would have to say that, that being a member of the San Dimas City Council has been a tremendous experience. I, I think if, you know, it's, it's sort of 40 years, but it's like, not one day at a time, but, but a week or two or whatever at a time. And, and then you look back and you say, man, where did my life go? And I, it went right here, two Tuesdays a month for 40 years. So, but you know, it's the same building. We, we have, we did fix it up a little bit, but same building. And it's, but it's been a, I've had an opportunity to work with some really fine people who work for the city, both in the city council and in the city staff. We've had four city managers during that whole time. Two of them served about a total, I suppose, of maybe 30 years or more than 30 years of of the time that I've been on the city council. Uh, and both of those who served for a lo- many years were outstanding and, and did a great job. The one, uh, the other one, uh, who was, uh, who did a lot of good things for the city but did not stay here as long, and now we have Ken, and, and I think, uh, we'll all look forward to a great career for Ken, uh, and the city will continue to be, uh, I think, what it has been and what we all hope it will be. Uh, I have, I happen to have read the Senate bill, and, uh, there are, there are things that say, yeah, we can have these kind of controls, but the problem is, you can't have those kind of controls and build enough units. Uh, so it, uh, it's easy to say, oh, yeah, you can only do, and, and they did recognize that cities under 50,000 are a little different to cities over, over 50. If you have more than 50,000 people, each single-family lot, there will be no more single-family zoning. But each single, what has been single-family lot could have, as a matter of right, four units. Under 50,000, only three. So, just look around, you'll solve all your housing problems, Henry. If you go around and tell everybody, they have to build two more units in their backyard. So, easy job. But it's been, it's been tremendous, and, uh, and I, I, the people who come to the meetings on a regular basis, uh, I appreciate you coming. It would be, uh, uh, not nearly as much fun and interest if there were not people in the audience. So, thank you all very much. And for the people who watch on TV, get a life. Good night. We are adjourned.